I think that's funny. Without Shirley here, it seems sort of lonely. Shirley's not here and there's no student rep.
I can't sit next to you.
I'm not going to ask you at the end about me going to the meeting.
You can sit on your lap and talk with your mom.
Can I be Shirley? I know I'm a student.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday, June 5th, 2018. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and top it clearly, and return the card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. First up, please stand for the flag salute.
Under the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, today we have our special presentations, which is Recognize an Award of Winning Teachers. To start the recognition, I would like to invite Sue Meckler and Tracy Prince to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Lumpy, school board members, Mr. Hardy. As Director of Middle School Curriculum and Instruction, it is my pleasure and honor to be before you tonight to recognize one of our own middle school teachers. As you know, we have many excellent teachers in our community, throughout our county, but tonight we have a special one to present to you. She has a passion and a dedication for her work that is exemplary and something that we would like for all teachers to have. I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Prince, our middle school social studies program specialist, to explain more about this great honor.
Good evening. It was with great pleasure that Dr. Bernadette Bennett and I had the opportunity to recommend an expert teacher from Sarasota County Schools to be considered as the nominee for the Dr. James F. Harris History Teacher of the Year Award. The Harris Award is presented to a teacher who demonstrates a commitment to engaging students in historical learning through innovative use of primary sources, implements active learning strategies to foster historical thinking skills, and participates in the National History Day contest. It is an even greater pleasure and privilege to announce that my dear friend and colleague, Dr. Jennifer Jeso of Sarasota Middle School, has been selected by the Museum of Florida History to represent Florida as the National History Day's Junior Division nominee for this national award. Dr. Jeso has shown professional dedication through in-depth study of historical literacy as she worked through her continuing education. Through modeling the processes of reading and thinking like a historian, Dr. Jeso brings history alive in her classroom. She creates an environment that encourages students to explore multiple perspectives of events. Her efforts transform students into citizens who not only think critically within the content, but also in their daily lives. This exceptional teacher inspires students to give 100% effort through modeling her own commitment and dedication. She supports not only her students, but students of other teachers as well by opening her classroom so that all may have the opportunity to share in the History Day experience. Dr. Jeso does this to encourage the love of history and learning. She's willing to go above and beyond to do what she thinks is best for all learners and supports students through county, state, and even national contests. Two senior division and two junior division Sarasota County Schools students will be advancing to the National History Day contest that will take place in College Park, Maryland later this month. The junior division participants are students of Dr. Jeso. The winner of the Harris Award for the junior division will be announced on June 14th at the National History Day contest. Dr. Jeso will compete against the nominees from 57 other National History Day affiliates from around our nation. Please join me in recognizing Dr. Jennifer Jeso for her dedication to history education and in wishing her luck as she represents Sarasota County Schools and the state of Florida in competing for this national award. Dr. Jeso?
I want to thank Tracy and Sue, and thank you to the board today for this recognition for the nomination. History education is truly a passion of mine. I have really dedicated all of my professional career to really enhancing the historical study in classrooms and helping students become true young historians and have the confidence to make decisions, discern information from several different types of sources, and really come up with unique arguments with evidence to support those things. So, National History Day is just one vehicle that I use in my classroom to really help promote the historical thinking and reading like a historian as well. So, I'm very excited and I am looking forward to Sunday's trip to DC and to watch my students compete because they will certainly make this county proud. Thank you.
We have the school board, we have the certificate to recognize your accomplishments, and school board members, would we like to do a photo?
Before we do, do you mind if we make a couple comments?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, Dr. Jeso, I hope you'll come back when you win at the next level. And it's really a pleasure to see you and to know that you're being recognized as this. You know, there's so many issues now with the legislature in terms of civics and civility and other things and making sure that our students are prepared and aware of history. So, we know that you're leading that strong charge of making sure that our kids are aware of all those things that they need to know and to understand about our history because as we all know, history does repeat itself. So, have a great summer, come back a winter, come back to see us, and best of luck to you because this is a great honor and we're really proud to have you and on our team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I agree with Ms. Goodwin. Having a good foundation in history lets you know what the perspective of why people are doing things now and maybe what the effects they are. And history does repeat itself, especially people who forget history. But I also wanted to point out, you know, as a father and a husband, that you can tell a lot about a person by their children and their family, and watching your son come up here beforehand and talking to your husband, you must be doing something right to be such well-rounded and have such a great family. And so, that to me is even more important than the award. So, keep the good work and seeing that beam of pride when you were looking at your son and taking those pictures, that told me a lot about you, more so than the award. So, keep it up.
Thank you.
Go, Mom.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker.
Hi. I think what you're doing is wonderful. History was never a strong suit for me, but my grandson went up to states for that. He really, do you know him?
I do, yes.
And it was because of you, I believe, that he was working with at the time.
Project on Ringling.
Yes, he did. So, thank you very much for encouraging our youth to get more involved in history and thank you for all you do.
Well, congratulations, thank you. I think it was said earlier, I think history plays such a tremendous role in education and learning because history does indeed repeat itself, or we can learn from lessons passed to avoid that repetition. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for representing our district well and making us proud, and best of luck.
Thank you.
I think the board members are going to go down and take a photo, if that's okay? Thank you again and congratulations. That concludes special presentations. Now, moving on to hearing of citizens, I do not believe we have any cards. Mrs. Tompkins? No cards? Okay, moving along. Additions and corrections to the agendas. Mr. Lumpy, do we have any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
We do. You skipped the superintendent's report deliberately.
You mean the deputy superintendent's report?
I apologize, but we can absolutely go back, so seize the moment, I apologize.
Well, so I guess there really isn't a formal superintendent's report, but I wanted to take, maybe just call it a minute of personal privilege.
Absolutely.
And this is really just kind of the luck of timing, but the next thing on your agenda after our hearing of citizens is your consent agenda. And one of the many things that is on your consent agenda today is my resignation effective the end of this month. And so, I didn't want that event to go by without having an opportunity to just say a couple of things, so if you could indulge me for a few minutes. I guess I want to start by saying to the citizens of Sarasota County, particularly the 43,000 kids that we serve every day, that as I reflect back on my professional life, this last 15 years has been one of the greatest personal and professional privileges and honors of my life. And I'll tell you a little story about why I feel that way. Most of you know that I'm a career military officer, and when I left the military, I really struggled kind of with what I wanted to do next in my life. And part of the reason I struggled is because I had my 19th birthday in basic training. I had spent essentially every day of my professional life starting off the same. I got up in the morning, I put on a uniform, I looked in the mirror, and I was proud of what was, what my uniform stood for, what I was looking back. And so, as I thought about what do I want to do next, and I had two daughters in college, I couldn't afford to retire, I was really struggling with that. And so, one evening, I'm sitting at home, I'm in my living room outside of Central Command Headquarters at McDill Air Force Base, and my phone rings. And on the other end of the phone is a gentleman some of you will remember by the name of Richard Hayes. I know Caroline remembers him. Sorry, Ms. Zucker remembers him. One of the most wonderful human beings I've ever dealt with in my life. Richard and I had a short conversation, and Richard said to me, "Scott, I'd like you to come down to Sarasota and talk to me about a job." And for me, at that point in my career, a light bulb went on for me. And that light bulb essentially said, "If you're really mean that you want to be about something more than making widgets for making money, you want to continue to be about something that is noble, public education was the place to be." And so, I came down here, I'll talk more about Richard in a minute, but haven't looked back. And I guess I tell you that story not because you necessarily care about where I came from, but as a message to the staff and teachers who work for Sarasota County. I think sometimes if this is the only business you have ever known, you sometimes forget how noble what you do is. And I just think that our staff need to remind themselves that what they do today, and I said staff, not teachers, because you know my business, I think the bus drivers every bit as important to the success of our kids as the classroom teacher is. But I think sometimes they forget about that. And so, I just want to remind them now and then that their business is important, it is every bit as noble as those of us who wore the uniform, and I just think they need to remind themselves of that sometimes. Which really leads me to the second thing I want to touch on just briefly, and that is the quality of the people that work with, for, and around you today. In my 26 years in uniform, I had the opportunity to work for some of the finest patriots that I would argue this nation ever produced. I will tell you that the people who are around me today are every bit as good as any team I ever had. And I know it's dangerous to single people out because when you do that, you tend to forget people, but I'm going to break that rule anyway and single out a couple of people, beginning with Jody Dumas. I don't know if he's in the room, I don't think he is. I've worked with Jody, he and I actually started the same day, first day with the school board was the same day. And I think about Jody as a guy who is smart, who is hardworking, who's dedicated and committed. He has a vision and he knows how to make that vision come true. Probably most significantly, though, is I've never met anybody with greater people skills than Jody Dumas. You just love to be around him because of who he is. I think about people like Beverly Gerard. Beverly is leadership 101. You want to know what basic leadership looks like? Go spend a day in food service. I think arguably everybody knows that Beverly runs the finest food service program in the state of Florida. I'm probably not in a position to say it nationally, but I would put Beverly's program against any in this nation, knowing that by whatever yardstick you measure food service, Beverly's going to beat them. I think about people like Joe Binswire. Joe's a young kid, but I look at Joe and I see a guy that has the potential to someday be the superintendent of schools here. And I think about what are our responsibilities to give him a career path that gets there. The people that I just mentioned, though, are all kind of director-level people, and you've heard the stories about standing on the shoulders of giants. My guess is if all three of them were here, they would echo that. So, if you, I want to peel that onion back maybe one more layer and talk about people like Tommy Watts. You may not know Tommy Watts, but he's the head custodian at Riverview High School. I had the opportunity to say this to Tommy face-to-face in front of his head custodian peers last week, and I was really glad I did. But whenever I go to Riverview High School, one of the things I always try to say to Tommy is, "This school looks as good today as it did the day it opened." And it does. I mean, after Hurricane Irma, five days after Hurricane Irma, you went to Riverview High School, it looked as good as the day it opened. That's about Tommy. Now, it's about a whole lot of other things. You have a great administration who holds your kids accountable, and Tommy has a great team, but at the end of the day, it's the leadership of the head custodian that makes that school look like it is. I think about people like Sarah Woods, who you may know, Sarah is kind of the current reigning school-related employee of the year. My wife and I have had a personal relationship with Sarah for a decade now, probably. She is a lesson in perseverance. She has overcome personal struggles, she's overcome professional struggles. She started off as an FS1. Beverly took her under her wing, provided her mentorship. Sarah was receptive to that mentorship, and today she is the food service manager at Gulf Gate Elementary School. If Robin Majak were sitting in the room today, their principal, and you asked Robin what's magic about what's happening at Gulf Gate, she would give you a whole bunch of reasons. Among those reasons, she'd include two people, Jeff Serverson, her head custodian, and Sarah, her food service manager. And then, I guess finally, I think about people like Charlie Brown, not the cartoon character, the bus driver. His name really is Charlie Brown. But Charlie is a guy who has a seniority number that would allow him to bid on just about any route in the district. And drivers do that, they know the easy routes. About two years ago, we had one of our really tough routes, we needed a seasoned driver. We went to Charlie and said, "How would you feel about giving up your kind of what we call gravy runs and take this tough route?" Charlie said, he said to us, "As long as Gilda," who by the way is the clinic aide at Philippi Shores, he said, "As long as Gilda is my attendant, I'll take that route." And he did. And if you talk to Dr. Foster, she would tell you that all of the challenges in that particular bus ride went away because of Charlie. I single these three people out because I think they are representative of the contributions that all of your classified staff make every day. And so, to the board, I would say, please just remember the quality of your people, recognize them often and recognize them publicly because they do wonderful things. To the staff of the school board, I would say, I don't know that you give yourself enough credit, but I'd ask you to do me this favor. Every once in a while, and maybe right now because the school year just ended, it's a wonderful time to kind of reflect back, find a, today, find kind of a quiet place in your house, preferably a place with a mirror. Think about a specific time that you had this year to have an impact on a kid, and if you think because of the job you have, you can't do that, call me, I'll tell you how you impacted a kid. But think about a particular time that you impacted a kid, pat yourself on the back and be incredibly, incredibly proud, not only of what you do, but of how, but as how you do it. The job you do is just too important to do wrong. Which I guess leads me to the third and kind of final categorical thing I wanted to talk about, and I hope you receive this in the spirit that it's intended, but to the six people who sit on this dais, and I'm not including Mr. Hardy or the student rep, but those of you who are kind of the leadership team of the district, the job that you do today is incredibly important. It is certainly a job that is too important to fail, and it's certainly a job that is too important to get caught up in individual political rhetoric. It's just too important to fail. And I, as I think about this, I think our community is watching us, our teachers and staff are watching us, most importantly, the 43,000 kids that we work to support are watching us. And sometimes I struggle with what message are we sending them? And I would really implore you to find some common ground from which to lead. The mission is too important to do otherwise. And I have some confidence that that can happen, and part of the reason I have that confidence, well, maybe two reasons. One, I think about School Avenue at Sarasota High School. Well, it's one of the few 5-0 votes we've had recently, but everybody kind of rallied around that because I think you asked yourself one basic question, and that's what's in the best interest of our kids. And my guess is whether you applied for the job, as is the case with the superintendent, or whether you ran for office, if I asked each one of you to make me a list of the reason you did, those lists would all be a little bit different, but somewhere near the top of that list would be something like, "I care about kids." And to me, that's what you have in common, that's the core that you share. And I just think if we could find a way to tap into that core and let that one basic criteria influence the decisions we make about everything, you're not always going to agree on how you get there, that's the nature of our business, but you'll get to a place where at the end of the day, an already great organization will get better because you have your focus on what you have in common, and that's what's in the best interest of our kids. And again, I hope you received that in the way it was intended. The last thing I'd like to do, I guess, is just extend a couple of thank yous. I started my time with the district when Wilma Hamilton was our superintendent. Wilma Hamilton and Richard Hayes gave me my first opportunity. Shortly after that, my great big teddy bear father, Gene Witt, who treated me like a son more than a subordinate on most days, behind him Gary Norris, who taught me more about instruction than frankly I ever cared to know, Lori White, who, best boss I ever had in my life, by the way, who taught me more about the people side of leadership than anybody ever had, and now Dr. Bowden and the five of you. I just want to say thank you for believing in me, for believing in my division, for supporting our vision and mission, and know that I leave confident and knowing that whoever follows me will continue to get that same support and encouragement. So, again, thank you very much, and I'll end with the same comment I started with. It has, it has been my personal and professional privilege to serve the 43,000 children in Sarasota County. Thank you for indulging me.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, you know, I just have to say, I have a history with Richard Hayes as well because Richard Hayes co-chaired the very first referendum in 2001, 2002, before he joined the district. And I know what a great business consultant and professional he was, and I worked with him every day for a year before he came to the school district. And when you first told me that Richard Hayes had hired you, you went up on my scale, you know, several, several levels because I know Richard, and I don't see Richard very often, but he's, he's a wonderful man, and we all remember him very, very, in a very, very special way. But what you have brought to this district has been nothing short of superior and spectacular. I never had to worry about anything in operations because everything that came out of operations has always been excellent, has always been well-designed, well-published, well-promoted, well-researched, and everything, and all the departments, and I've talked to many, many people about their departments and how facilities uses the bubble gum machine and how facilities sprays things down with a peroxide solution, dah 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 dah. I mean, you can romance a lot of these, a lot of these departments pretty much because we do things in a special and a unique way, and that, a lot of that is because of you. And so, I would just say that I hope you have a wonderful life. And I hope you don't forget us because we'll never forget you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, a lot of the accolades you were giving on your, no. The accolades you were giving onto your staff, I'm sure is appreciated by them, but it's more of a testament to your leadership skills. I remember the first time you and I sat down and met when I just got on the school board, and you asked me, "What is it that I'm looking for from your department?" And I said, "Act like you guys don't even exist," and that's how it's been. You guys are behind the scenes, you're like the elves at night, making sure that the bus, you guys do such a good job that we, I don't mean this in a bad way, that we take it for granted, everything that you guys do. Nobody thinks for a second that when you walk into, you know, a classroom in the morning, the trash can's going to be replaced with a new liner that's going to be clean, the bus is going to run on time, there's going to be food there, not just lunch. Like when I grew up, you're going to make sure the kids have breakfast if they need it, that they're going to have food at the summer. I mean, just so many things, your facilities department that you hit on, your IT, that you guys do so much stuff that makes everybody else look good, that when the, you know, the door closes and it's just the teacher and the student, your department's there too. You made sure that door closed, you're making sure that the IT is there, you're making sure those kids are fed, that they're on time. So, you, you impact instructions so well. And I'll add out a little secret that's probably going to make people not feel as far kindly about Scott, but he's one of those people that I go to and say, "How did I do? What did I mess up?" I mean, I seek out his input because he has a way of looking at things, and he's the guy that you go out to ask directions to, to get his feedback, because he's the guy who knows how to fix it, he knows how to make it run more efficiently. And so, hopefully, even though you're leaving, I can call you from time to time and ask you for your opinion and have you tell me how I messed up and what I should, what I did wrong, and I hope that's okay with you, that you allow me to ask those questions because you're a great resource, not just to our school, to our community, and hopefully you're not going to be going away. So, thank you.
Mrs. Zucker.
My nickname for Scott is "Speed Me Up Scotty." That's what I say to him every time I see him. Thank you. You have been a friend and a mentor, and you've run this district really well. I know you're second in command, but you run your section like it's, you're in charge of it. I'm so appreciative of everything that you've done, all the time you've taken, taking me around up in Attix at Pineview, trying to show me why we needed new chillers there. I mean, it's just been amazing couple of years with you, Scott. And you know, my heart is really heavy. I've been trying for six months to talk you out of this. The last time I went to you and said, "I'm going to hit you below the belt." So, know I'm coming for that before I say anything. I still couldn't get you to change your mind. I just absolutely love you, Scott. Thank you very much.
Well, I share the same sentiments, obviously. I'm sad to get to you go, but I want you to know how, what a tremendous impact you've had on me. As soon as I became a board member, I never, I'll never forget the facilities tour, which I still to this day rave about, and if anyone hasn't heard me talk about it, please ask us about it. And you would always be willing to open that door because I think so often, and rightfully so, our focus is on education, but this is a large enterprise behind the scenes, and you have done it with pride, you've led with pride. You are this loyal soldier is just this word that comes to mind, and you just, you approach everything with confidence and with skill and very common sense approach. I've always been able to be very candid with you, and I hope, and I believe you have been likewise, and I think that's allowed better decision-making. You are a tremendous asset. I am, it has been an absolute honor to work with you, and we will miss you very, very much, so. And I feel bad for missing, skipping over the superintendent's report, so I apologize, but I am glad that you chimed in. So, thank you again for everything.
Women's, if we don't accept his resignation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Zucker, and then it's Mr. Eric.
Oh, my gosh, no, I forgot what I was going to say.
Yeah, we could.
You're the person that took control and made quantitative data read qualitative, no, take qualitative data and make it read quantitative. I couldn't imagine when you first said that you were going to do this, how in the world are you going to measure what you're doing? But you've done it, you put a whole matrix in place. But you've done it, you put a whole matrix in place to show us what the business side of the organization is, what it needs, and what it has. So, thank you. There's a lot of years without, before that was completed. Thank you, Scott.
Any other comments? Now we can move on to the additions and corrections to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
There are. So, the first addition is to add addendum one to the personnel report. If you've looked at that addendum, it's fairly large because it has on it, among other things, the food service and transportation, summer school appointments. Second, we would like to pull two items, item number 55, which is approval of a job description for teacher trainer, for procedural reason that I could share if you care. And then, based on our conversation at this afternoon's workshop, particularly as it relates to school board policy 6.323, which has already been advertised and is on your agenda tonight for acceptance, I would suggest we pull that and make some of the changes that we talked about today, bring it back to re-workshop, and if we need to do that, and then re-advertise with those changes. That is item number 56.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's it.
Is there a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda with revisions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the amended consent agenda. Board members, please vote. It would be a voice vote, excuse me, it'll have to be a voice vote because we pulled an item for 56. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes unanimously. There are items on new business, number 58. Is there a motion?
Move for approval of the articulation agreement between State College of Florida, known as SCF, and the school board of Sarasota County, Florida, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I, are there any comments? I'll be, okay. Well, I know that I have spoken to Mr. Kantez extensively over about two-plus years on this, and I did have a couple of questions as early up today to make sure that everything by way of, as, just to go back, that there are some changes that have been, transpired in the last year as it relates to Pineview. And it had caught me off-guard tremendously. And I, I know we need to move forward and continue to have a strong partnership with all of those who we work with, and SCF is definitely one of them. I still have concerns as to what got us here, but ultimately, my biggest thing, as I always say, is communication with the families, with the board, so that we know, leading up to it. Quite frankly, I know that I wanted to clarify that if any of the items that had been changed since the, based on the changes at Pineview, would still be compliant with what's before us. I think that has been confirmed, and that the language is still consistent of that. But I do hope that in the following year, we can get back to a place where we're able to expand upon those options. Again, I guess go back from a history standpoint, we in over two years have changed and expanded the options at Pineview specifically, at the request of families. And that's why I think this particular change, that there is a specific restriction on Pineview, which is one of our highest touted schools, not just in the district, but nationally, concerned me gravely. But ultimately, my, and whatever led it to that point, I think the communication piece of it with the families and with the board is still something that I'm very challenged and wish that could have been better. So, I will be approving this, but I just wanted to share my thoughts. Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I would just say that I feel that we need to put a committee together, and we've talked about putting a committee together, and that committee would consist of community leaders, some teachers and staff, some Pineview graduates, some Pineview student parents, perhaps, but we need to, we need to look at and say to those, and I think I give Dr. Covert some assistance, you know, what does a Pineview diploma mean? It means various different things to different families, and perhaps we need to communicate that in a better way. But a Pineview diploma is a gifted diploma. And that's the part where I start. If we are looking at getting an AA dual enrollment and getting an associate's two-year degree from a community college, specifically SCF, then we have other alternatives for that student that make it easier. We don't have any issues with other schools that have dual enrollment. So I think we need to definitely present this in a better way. But the committee as such consisted, that worked on this, consisted of our staff and SCF staff working together, and statute does not say specifically what kind of a committee this should be, nor does it say anything about a gifted school either, which is where I think we have an issue. And I said, gee, do we need to maybe legislate something that would give us specifics at Pineview, and, you know, I don't know if we do or not, but I do know this, we need to come together and to discuss this and to, to both look at existing Pineview students as well as Pineview alum and those people that are still in the, in quote, Pineview family, and there are a lot of those folks around, and come up and do a better job. Yes, I agree with you. But I think there was some conjecture about what was the committee and who was going to be part of it, and I think we can do that better. But I'm hoping that this leads to some options for Pineview and some options for other schools, and it looks like in the future that we may be looking at another option with SCF in South County as well. So this gives us, it gives parents a lot more choice. So, I am supporting this tonight, and going forward, I think we have a lot of things we can do to make things better. So, look forward to it.
Thank you. Mrs. Zucker.
I would just like to thank staff because I know the emails that you all have been getting, because some of them I send to you, and you send them back so I can reply because I don't know it all. But I want to thank you both, Dr. Covert, Steve Kantez, and whoever else worked, but I know you two did. Thank you, because I know it's many hours on this one subject, and there's tons of subjects. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I agree that there has been an issue about communication that we need to improve upon, but the place where I start is, is the people on both sides of this articulation agreement, while they may cave and log our heads, I can guarantee you that both sides of this agreement were trying to do what they thought was right and best for the kids. There was nobody trying to purposely say, "Let me get these people, let me exclude this person." I agree that there was, our fault is, is that we don't get that message out, and that when we don't communicate, people think nefarious things. But I can guarantee you, from the SCF side and on the Sarasota County School Board side, both people were trying to do what they think is right. And one of the other problems with our district is, is that we give, we bend over backwards to provide so many options and so many things that when one of those options is closed off, people feel like they have been specifically and purposefully, you know, excluded from something. When, you know, we have IB, ACE, AP, you can mask, you can do dual enrollment, you know, online, you can actually go to the college, you can get in your car, and, you know, like when I was going to school for dual enrollment, dual enrollment, man, you spent half the day, and you got in your car and you drove to, it was Pennsyl College Junior College at the time, you drove to the community college and you, and you did it there. We have charter schools, we have school choice, we have so many things and options available to people that when people think, "Oh, you're not going to deliver that particular product in this particular manner at this particular time for my particular kid," you know, "You're somehow or another picking on me," and I don't think that's fair. But we need to work on the communication piece. Wanting to be transparent so people know, if people know in advance, and people know when we, when they know, as soon as possible, that alleviates things. It's when people think that people were hiding or excluding things, that, you know, after open, a public comment is done, something comes up, people start, you know, conspiracy theory starts coming out. Another thing is getting the story out of communicating that people trying, honestly, trying to do what they think is best and honest. And I'm telling you, I go out to the, to the district, and I can honestly tell you, we have great staff. I have not met somebody where I'm like, "What is that person doing working there? Are we going to get rid of that guy?" I haven't. It's like, wow.
Oh, really?
How is that person working here? We got this guy? Wow, this is incredible. I hope no one tries to steal, steals, steals away. So, we have a lot of incredible staff. And on the SCF side, I was on the SCF board before I came on this board, and that's a group of people who want, wonderful, great partners. You know, I think this is a period of transition where people try to figure out how to make it work within Pineview and all the same issues that Ms. Goodwin brought up. But I think at the end, it's going to end up being a better model for everybody when this transition period has ended. So, again, I just want to thank staff and thank SCF for working towards this, and we need to do a better job of making sure that people, the public is engaged, and to making sure that people know that these leaders we have, you know, are really trying to do what's best interest. And I got to give it to Dr. Covert and Steve Kantez, you know me, I wouldn't have the patience to put up the stuff you guys did. I would have, you know, the texts and emails I would have sent back. I think everybody's seen them before, it's written in the paper. But the fact that you guys, you know, maintain your professional composure, I don't know how you did it, you know, maybe you can share some thoughts with me, I probably need it. So, good job. Thank you.
I will close with that, is that I do, I know there's been, like I said, tremendous, tremendous amount of response and work, and again, I can't reiterate, I know that communication has, being upfront where we're at, where we're going, and what it takes, just so that we can, so that there are no surprises as much as possible. I know that's never going to be the case, but I'm done with that. So, anyone, all members, I guess, please vote on the motion before them.
I think I'm funny.
The motion passes.
I would move that the agreement.
Four, I'm sorry, four to zero, one not present. Go ahead.
I would recommend that the agreement to extend the Apex Learning Recovery Program for the 2018-19 school year be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments?
I'm accusing myself, but I signed a notice of that and gave it to the secretary.
Thank you. Members, please vote on the motion before you. The motion passes, three As, one abstain, and one not present. That concludes new business. Any comments? Seeing none.
I would like to make a comment, but I just have to take my time so I phrase it correctly.
Sure.
I'm sorry that I'm not going to be here when you have the meeting with all of our partners for deciding what we're going to do with the, with the task, with hiring police But I don't think that we should be doing it now. I think we should be doing it when we're all here. I know Shirley is in Paris right now, and she can't be here. I can't be here, my granddaughter is graduating school. So, I would like to be here and be part of this discussion. So, I'm not happy how this meeting is coming about with our partners without the school board, just the chair, because that means that none of us have any voice into it, and it could have been done afterwards. It could have been done after our 19th meeting, when we're all going to be here. It doesn't, it didn't need to be done when it's being put on, because you need five members of the board and the superintendent present to make decisions and hear what's going on from where I stand right from. One thing I think that we are neglecting to remember is that we make policy, the superintendent runs the school district, and that means he's also involved with all of our partners in the legal field as far as us putting a police force together. It's his responsibility to make sure it's done, then give it to us so that we can say, yes, is this something that we can support and we can check it off and say yes or no, there are things that we don't want to happen? But that's, the way we're doing it is backwards, is not how this should have happened, and I'm sorry I have to bring it up like this, but I've been thinking about this a long time, and I am not happy. Our police chief will also be hired by, that, after the 26th, I think it is, we're still in time to do things, and the police chief should be involved with the decisions that we make here as a board, because he's the one that's going to be running that department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I'm going back to my previous comment and Scott Limpy's, you know, I think it's better if we go from a place of that people are trying to do what they think is best. And we all do that in our own different ways. Lord knows, I'm different than everybody else, than pretty much everybody I've ever met my entire life. I think I'm funny. And so if people want to go out and become informed, to be knowledgeable, I applaud that. I think if you want to seek out and get information, I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, since there's not a quorum, we won't be making decisions, there won't be a policy being made, but if people want to get input and decisions and hear from subject matter experts, you can't get more subject matter expert than the, in law enforcement, than the police chiefs and the sheriff of Sarasota County. I mean, if you want to become knowledgeable, I think that that's, I'm perfectly fine with that. And if somebody else wants to, you know, get the information to do their job a different way, I'm fine with that, too. We're up here, and we're trying to do the best we can. And if, you need to come with the thought that people are trying to do what they think is best, they're trying to do what they think is right, and we disagree on things. But what's important, I'll tell you this much, I love Jane Goodwin. Jane Goodwin is one of the people who I emulated and caused me to want to be on the school board. Do her and I vote alike every single time? No. No, God, no. Do I respect her decisions? Yes. I respect her as a person, and I respect her decisions. You know why? Because even if Jane and I disagree on an issue, I believe in my heart that Jane's coming at it for the right reasons. I believe that she's, she's doing what she thinks is right and is best, even if we disagree. And sometimes when we disagree the most is when I think she's trying to do what's in her heart the best. And you got to respect the individuality and difference that exists up here. If we start telling people, "You have to do it like I do, you can't go out and seek out information," I think that, that makes us weaker as a board. We need, we need to be stronger and stick together and understand our differences, not just understand our differences, but almost support, not almost, support and cherish those differences that, that exist amongst this board. And so if people, people want to go out and get subject matter experts and bring people around, I think the more the merrier, and so I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Well, I, thank you. I just wanted to add very quickly that I do want all of our board members to be a part of it in this. I know that there's been a mention of a follow-up one, and I certainly encourage that, and I'm saying we, this should not be an isolated only one-time thing. I think there is some elements of urgency that partners have shared, it's a great opportunity. And I think, I hope, and I know I've just had a long conversation with some members previously, I think it's a great opportunity to get us all on the same page, to set some calm and ease and confidence in the entire community to make sure we're all working together on an issue that everyone cares so deeply about. And so I am absolutely open and willing and encourage a follow-up meeting as well because I want to make sure all of us understand and know what's taking place. No decision will be making, be made. It'll be a public information opportunity. And like I said, I think it's a tremendously positive opportunity if, when handled. So, I look forward to sharing that information with everyone and continuing to move forward as we weigh out future options on what's the best way to move forward with the safety and security, because it is very important, and I think that, again, we have a great opportunity to, to all get on the same page and then work together. Mrs. Zucker.
I agree. It would be nice if we were all on the same page and together, but the sure as heck isn't going to build that, where the other board members are not part of the discussion, to hear from our partners what it is that they are thinking. I mean, it's, it's not. There is no reason for us to have this this early. We could wait and have it later when all board members were here and our chief of police were here. I'm sorry, that's the way it should be. We also have to watch out how we run the meetings, how we work together, it's not just us. It's the superintendent who runs this district, and I'll be, God, I'll be dying when I still say it, it's the superintendent that runs this district, not this board. This board just sets the policy for how the district should run, and that's very important that people understand. And that's very important that people understand that.
Thank you. Are there any more comments or announcements?